Good evening, everyone, and thank you for such a wonderful turnout for this project here for the public hearing for State Road 20 PDNE.
Well, I can listen to it.
Yeah, that's right. You're at least there.
For our online participants, if y'all wouldn't mind looking at your microphone. So you know, we can hear you. We have quite a few people in the room. I always like to know that when I'm unmuted. So if you don't hear this audio at this time, please check your computer speaker settings. If you're experiencing technical difficulties, please contact technical support at amanda.hanley@atkinsglobal.com. In the event of technical difficulties during the open house or public hearing, please stay online while we work to resolve the issue. My name is Iris Waters, and I will be moderating the public hearing for State Road 20 PDNE study. On behalf of the Florida Department of Transportation, thank you for your interest in this study. Tori White, the project manager for this PDNE study, is overseeing the hearing in-person location at the Heritage Church, Freeport, Florida. Tori, would you mind waving for us? Thank you. She's in the back. We're both being supported by representatives of the FDOT District 3 and consultant team. We would also like to take a moment and thank any elected officials who are in attendance for tonight's public hearing. Feel free to wave if you'd like to. Thank you very, very much. We appreciate your interest and involvement in this project. We're now going to turn our attention to the narrated public hearing presentation.
Good evening. The Florida Department of Transportation would like to welcome you to the public hearing for the State Road 20 Project Development and Environment, or PDNE, study. PDNE study located in Ocalusa, Walton, and Washington Counties, Florida. Financial management project numbers 220138-2-22-01, and 220635-4-22-01, and ETDM number 14302. In addition to the PDNE staff here tonight, a representative from the District Right-of-Way Department is here and will be available after the public hearing if you have questions regarding residential or business relocations on this project. A transcript is being made of all oral proceedings and will be a part of the public record for this project. Before we start the presentation, I will share a few details to help you participate in this meeting. On your computer or device screen, you should see an information window that looks like the one in the upper right corner shown here. To listen to the meeting, your computer or device speakers are selected by default. If you prefer to listen by phone, select Telephone in the Audio pane of the Control Panel and dial in using the information displayed. All virtual and phone-in attendees will be placed in Listen-Only mode throughout the public hearing. At a later date, we will provide responses to written comments that were submitted during online registration and those submitted at the in-person venue. The comment period begins as soon as the presentation has ended. Verbal comments from the in-person hearing will be addressed first. Comments from our virtual attendees will be addressed second. Providing verbal comments using GoToWebinar is simple. First, you must request to speak when registering to attend. During the comment period, the organizer will call your name that you provided at registration and unmute you. If the microphone icon is green, you're ready to make your comment. If the microphone icon is orange, you will need to click the microphone icon once, and it will notify you that you're unmuted, and then you can provide your comment. Again, you will not be on camera at any time if you join online. During the public comment period after the formal presentation, in-person participants will be called upon to speak first, followed by the virtual online speakers who wish to speak. If you're dialed into the public hearing by telephone, your phone was automatically placed in Listen-Only mode and will remain in Listen-Only mode throughout the public hearing. A recording of the webinar will be available at the project website three days after the hearing. You can also call the project manager after the public hearing to request additional project information. Prior to the public hearing, draft engineering and environmental documents were made available for public review at the Freeport Public Library and the FDOT District 3 office since Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021, and will continue to be available through Friday, April 30th, 2021, at these locations. The FDOT District 3 location is by appointment only. Individuals who would like to view the documents should call Tori White, the FDOT project manager, at 888-638-0250, extension 1455, or email tory-white@dot.state FL.us. The FDOT District 3 office is located at 1074 Highway 90 in Chipley, Florida. You may also view the project documents at the project website and at tonight's in-person public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to share information with the general public about the proposed improvement, its conceptual design, all alternatives under study, and the potential benefits and disadvantages pertaining to social, economic, and environmental impacts upon the community. The public hearing also serves as an official forum, providing an opportunity for members of the public to express their opinions regarding the project. There are three primary components to tonight's hearing. First, the open house, which occurred prior to this presentation, where you were invited to view the project displays and to speak with the project team and provide comments in writing or to the court reporter. Second, this presentation, which will explain the project purpose and need, study alternatives, and potential impacts, both beneficial and adverse. And third, a formal comment period following this presentation, where you will have the opportunity to provide oral statements, or those at the in-person location may provide comments directly to the court reporter or in writing. This environmental study has been conducted by FDOT District 3 in compliance with all applicable federal environmental laws and pursuant to 23 U.S.C. Section 327 and the Implementing Memorandum of Understanding between FDOT and the Federal Highway Administration, FHWA, signed on December 14th, 2016. The FDOT Office of Environmental Management in Tallahassee is the approving authority. The proposed improvement involves the widening of an eight-mile portion of State Road 20 from two to four lanes from King Road to County Road 3280, Black Creek Boulevard, in Walton County, and provide pedestrian and bicycle accommodations. This hearing is being held to provide you with the opportunity to comment on this project. The public hearing was advertised consistent with the federal and state requirements shown on the slide. Public participation at this hearing is encouraged and solicited without regard to race, color, national origin, age, sex, religion, disability, or family status. Persons wishing to express their concerns about Title VI may do so by contacting either the Florida Department of Transportation District 3 office or the Tallahassee Office of the Florida Department of Transportation. This contact information is also provided in the project handout. FDOT is conducting a Project Development and Environment, or PDNE, study for this project. The PDNE process is used to evaluate potential impacts to determine an alternative utilizing a continuous community outreach process to ensure that all interested parties have meaningful participation in the process. Public input and information received at the hearing will be taken into consideration when preparing the final documents for this study. Prior to initiating this PDNE study, FDOT conducted a feasibility study on State Road 20 from Catmar Road in Ocalusa County, continuing east through Walton County, and terminating just east of State Road 79 in Washington County. The feasibility study documented the need for possible improvements, identified potential fatal flaws, and included traffic and safety analysis. Based on the traffic projections from the feasibility study, widening State Road 20 to four lanes is only justified in the eight-mile segment from King Road to County Road 3280, Black Creek Boulevard, in Walton County. The purpose of this project is to address capacity issues on State Road 20 from King Road to County Road 3280, Black Creek Boulevard, in Walton County. Currently, this segment of State Road 20 is a two-lane undivided roadway with a center-left turn lane from west of Madison Street to west of Jackson Street, approximately .4 miles within the city of Freeport. This project is needed to address capacity and safety issues on State Road 20 from King Road to Black Creek Boulevard, with a secondary need of providing an alternate east-west route for I-10 and US-98. The corridor is expected to experience increased traffic volumes by 2045 due to the anticipated population increase in Walton County. In addition, State Road 20 from King Road to Black Creek Boulevard is experiencing more crashes than the average similar roadways. This project is consistent with local transportation plans, including the Ocalusa-Walton Transportation Planning Organization 2040 Cost-Feasible Plan, the Transportation Improvement Program, TIP, the State Transportation Improvement Program, STIP, and other regional plans. State Road 20 is designated as a highway of commerce by the Emerald Coast Regional Council. This designation is given to corridors that move significant volumes of freight having high value to end users. Additionally, this portion of State Road 20 is designated as an emergency evacuation route by the Florida Division of Emergency Management. The goals of this project are to address capacity and regional mobility needs along State Road 20, provide multimodal features such as bicycle and sidewalks where appropriate, enhance roadway safety, and avoid or minimize social and environmental impacts. No build and build alternatives are being considered as a part of this PDNE study. The no-build alternative maintains the existing facility as is. No new improvements to State Road 20 are made, and there is no congestion relief along the corridor. While the no-build alternative would have no environmental impacts or financial costs, it would not address the vehicular and pedestrian traffic and safety needs. We will now discuss the build alternative, which proposes to widen State Road 20 to include four lanes from King Road to County Road 3280, Black Creek Boulevard. With two lanes in each direction, sidewalks and shared-use paths are also included in some sections. This build alternative moving forward in the presentation will be referred to as the preferred alternative. State Road 20 is classified as a rural principal arterial. It's currently a two-lane, non-restrictive roadway. The proposed improvements would make it a four-lane restricted roadway, which provides guidelines for distances for median openings. The entire project uses a best-fit alignment to avoid or reduce impacts. The preferred alternative uses three different typical sections. First, we will discuss the preferred alternative from King Road to west of Blueberry Road and from west of Joe Campbell Road to Black Creek Boulevard. This four-lane divided highway rural typical section includes 12-foot lanes, 10-foot shoulders, 5-foot paved, and a 40-foot median. There would be a 12-foot shared-use path along the south side from West Bay Loop Road to west of Blueberry Road. From west of Blueberry Road to US-331, State Road 83, the preferred alternative is a four-lane divided highway urban typical section with 11-foot lanes, a raised 22-foot median, a six-foot sidewalk along the north side, and a 12-foot shared-use path along the south side, along with curb and gutter. Lastly, the preferred alternative includes a transition typical section from US-331 to west of Joe Campbell Road consisting of a four-lane divided highway with 12-foot lanes, a raised 22-foot median that includes four-foot inside paved shoulders, a five-foot sidewalk along the north side, and a 12-foot shared-use path along the south side, along with curb and gutter. The preferred alternative will also include bridge enhancements. This includes widening over the Alaco Slough Creek and Big Alaco Creek and the replacement of Lafayette Creek Bridge. Based on public feedback, the proposed shared-use path was extended to provide the missing link for the Bay Loop Trail from County Road 83A West, West Bay Loop Road, to County Road 83A East, East Bay Loop Road, and continues east through Freeport. This improvement will enhance the recreational opportunities in this area by providing a safer route for pedestrians and bicyclists. The PDNE study identified several options to accommodate traffic volumes that are projected to occur in year 2045, with a goal to maintain an acceptable level of service through year 2045. Level of Service, or LOS, measures to what extent cars are delayed when traveling through a given area. As in grade school, a level of service of F is failing or highly congested, and A is the best, or free-flowing. An acceptable level of service is level of service D or better. The traffic analysis shows that with no improvements, State Road 20 from County Road 83A West to US-331 will be deficient level of service F by 2045. If State Road 20 is improved to a four-lane divided facility from King Road to Black Creek Boulevard, the necessary capacity and an acceptable level of service of D or better will be provided through the 2045 design year. As a part of the proposed widening improvements, the intersection of US-331 will also include additional turn lanes. Analysis of this intersection showed that the addition of right-turn overlap signals and additional turn lanes resulting in dual northbound and southbound left-turn lanes and dual eastbound right-turn lanes would improve this intersection from a level of service F to a level of service D in both the AMP and the PMP gowers. These improvements would help reduce intersection delay and congestion while also reducing vehicle queues, backups at the intersections. An important element of this PDNE study was to evaluate the potential project impacts and benefits of the proposed improvements. A wide range of environmental resources were evaluated, including social, cultural, natural, and physical features. Also considered were engineering and traffic factors, along with public input gathered throughout the PDNE study. One of the unavoidable consequences on a project such as this is the necessary relocation of families or businesses. On this project, we anticipate the relocation of 20 residential properties and 15 businesses. All right-of-way acquisition will be conducted in accordance with the Florida Statute 339.09 and the Federal Uniform Relocation Assistance and Real Property Acquisition Policies Act of 1970, commonly known as the Uniform Act. If you're required to make any type of move as a result of a Department of Transportation project, you can expect to be treated in a fair and helpful manner and in compliance with the Uniform Relocation Assistance Act. If a move is required, you will be contacted by an appraiser who will inspect your property. We encourage you to be present during the inspection and provide information about the value of your property. You may also be eligible for relocation advisory services and payment benefits. If you're being moved and you're unsatisfied with the department's determination of your eligibility for payment or the amount of that payment, you may appeal that determination. You will be promptly furnished necessary forms and notified of the procedures to be followed in making that appeal. A special word of caution. If you move before you receive notification of the relocation benefits that you might be entitled to, your benefits may be jeopardized. A representative from the District Right-of-Way Department is here tonight and will be able to provide you with further assistance if you have questions regarding residential or business relocations on this project. This slide illustrates the impacts for the preferred alternative relating to: social resources comprising of residences, businesses, and community facilities; cultural resources including archaeological sites, historic resources, and Section 4F parks and recreational lands; natural resources including wetlands, floodplains, threatened and endangered species; and physical issues which include air quality, noise, and potential contamination sites. The impacts related to these resources were evaluated to determine the preferred alternative. A comparison of the impacts from the preferred alternative is provided in the environmental document prepared for this project. The estimated project cost is $201.5 million. The project team examined the project area for publicly-owned recreational properties that may be affected under Section 4F of the Department of Transportation Act of 1966. The city of Freeport City Hall, Casey Park, has been identified as a Section 4F resource that will be impacted as a result of the project. The project proposes to use approximately .121 acres from the parking lot section of the city of Freeport City Hall, Casey Park property, abutting the State Road 20 highlighted here in yellow. Currently, the city hall and Casey Park use the same parking area. This acquisition would not affect the existing parking functions. Since the proposed project will not impact the parking functions and will not encroach upon the recreational uses of the park, there will be no adverse effect on the activities, features, or attributes of Casey Park. FDOT is seeking a Section 4F de minimis finding for the Casey Park property. In accordance with federal regulations, an opportunity for public review and comment is being provided as a part of this public hearing. Benefits of the proposed improvements include providing safety enhancements along with new and improved pedestrian facilities, improving mobility and relieving congestion in the study area, and providing positive social and economic impacts. This graphic represents the delivery process for a project, beginning with the feasibility phase and ending with a construction phase. This project, from west of Freeport City Hall to County Road 3280, Black Creek Boulevard, is funded for the design phase in 2024. The FDOT will continue to seek opportunities to fund the remaining portion of the project from King Road to west of Freeport City Hall. The project is currently not funded for right-of-way nor construction in the FDOT's five-year work program. Thank you. That concludes the formal presentation. We will now begin the public comment period of the public hearing. The next step is to incorporate your input on this public hearing into our decision-making process. After the comment period closes and your input has been considered, a decision will be made, and the final PDNE document will be sent to the FDOT Office of Environmental Management, which, based on the Memorandum of Understanding, signed with the Federal Highway Administration on December 14th, 2016, has approval authority on this project, granting location and design concept acceptance. Please note that we will not be responding to your comments and questions today, but we will respond in writing at a later date. Anyone desiring to make a statement now will have an opportunity to do so. There are multiple ways you may provide your comments tonight: written, verbally...
Luckily, that was very near the end, and I can take over what that was supposed to say. There are many ways that you can provide your comments, either verbally, in person, online, or here. So we're going to start with the... We have one speaker that has already turned in their comment card. Anyone that would like to speak in addition to that, if they would at the end, after this person makes their comment, just raise your hand, and we'll have you fill out a comment card at the end. If you represent an organization, municipality, or other public body, please provide that information as well. And we will ask each of you to limit your comment to three minutes, just to respect everyone's time. But also, as we mentioned, there are comment boxes in the back so that you can put your comment there, or you can put your comment online in addition to that. Our first speaker, Ms. Cassandra Brown, and if you would, please step to this microphone up here.
Can you hear me? Okay. I have a question concerning the turn to get off, to turn into my driveway. Is there going to be turn lanes, like at Hammock Bay? They're inside the city limit. They have a turning lane to get out of the road. I have almost been killed two times. My neighbors have a problem because they come up on you and they go around. There's already been accidents where Publix is the... Right there, they won't put those metal things down, so they can't go around. So are they going to put turning lanes in the residential? Because that's residential area. It's inside the city limits. They do 60 miles an hour. It is a 45 mile an hour speeding zone. So I want a turning lane because I put my mailbox over here so I can get off the road and check my mail instead of getting killed. So if this is all fine and good, if that's green grass in there, can we make that a turning lane? That's my question. I want a turning lane for people to get off the road and not, you know, have more accidents. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very, very much for your comment. And just as a reminder... Yes. Did you get the address? Okay, perfect. We have a court reporter that's making sure we get every comment and can respond. Do we have any other in-person participants that would like to comment? Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to turn it over to our online moderator for all of our online registered participants that may want to speak and ask questions as well.
Good evening. We took preregistrations ahead of time, and we had one person register ahead of time to say that she would like to give comment. If you are online tonight and you have not preregistered, please go ahead and raise your hand. And after our preregistered participant has spoken, I will call on you. Ms. Anita, you registered ahead of time. I'm going to unmute you. I'd like you to unmute yourself. Right now, you're showing a self-muted, Ms. Anita. If you will unmute yourself, you should be able to speak. Oh, I see that you've got a question. Let's see. Oh, you have decided not to speak for now. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. All right. Any other online participants who are interested in speaking tonight? Use the Raise Your Head function. All right. Mr. Patrick Davis, I'm going to unmute you. You are now self-muted, so if you'll unmute yourself, you should be able to speak.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Patrick Davis. I'm with GE Bishops Landing LLC. We're a commercial property owner on the south side of State Road 20. We are... Our property is west of Freeport, or west of 331, but east of Hammock Bay. We are in the process of designing a multifamily and commercial development that the proposed project could impact, and our designers have questioned if we should, at this point, design around the proposed improvements or not. if we should, at this point, design around the proposed improvements or not. And our question is, who specifically should we... At FDOT, should we ask these questions to? And that's... that's the end of my question.
Okay. Thank you, Patrick. FDOT will be replying to you in writing in the coming days. We have your contact information from your registrations, so someone will be reaching out. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? If you will just use the raise-your-hand function, I'll be able to call on you. All right, Iris. It doesn't look like we have anybody else online, so I'm going to hand it back to you.
FDOT people, representatives, come to see me back about probably four or five months ago. It took us five minutes. He didn't believe how much traffic was there. We came down and visited me. It took us five minutes to cross the road to get to the beachside. In six minutes, crossed back over. He said he was really surprised. But I was wondering if possibly someone would look at putting on some type of a counter, saying, "Count the traffic." We're seeing more accidents, mostly in small fender benders, but there was a big one just recently in front of our house. But if they could possibly look at, including a project, to widen that road through there, because it's getting pretty dangerous going in and out of there as well. Just might be an idea for future. I know that they've probably looked at this, or I've been told they've even looked at this back three or four years ago, and there wasn't hardly any traffic at all. It just saw some... seemed like coming up with all the new subdivisions down at this end, and a lot of people moving out to the bases like Duke Field, Seventh Force Group, and what else, and Eglin, of course. So a lot more traffic. But if you consider at least looking into it, she would appreciate it. For safety, thanks.
Yes, sir. Thank you very, very much for your comment. Do we have any other comments? Okay. We have another comment online.
All right. Mr. David Kane? You're unmuted, David.
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
We can. Thank you.
Thanks. I have a question about timing of the project. It shows initial design in 2024 and then construction at some point in the future. My concern is there's a significant issue at 331 and 20 with people wanting to turn and go west on 20 from northbound 331. It backs up for miles at times. And just recently, we had a road rage shooting at that intersection as a result. So my question is, can something be considered in the interim to alleviate the significant traffic congestion problem at that intersection in advance of doing the entire project? That's... that's all my comment.
Thank you, David. Someone will respond to you in writing within the next couple of days, but I thank you for your comment. Are there any other folks online who would like to speak? Okay, Iris. I'm not seeing anyone, so I'm going to hand it back.
Hey, I'm not seeing any hands in the audience at this time. This concludes the public comment period, and we would like to thank everyone for taking the time to share your comments concerning this project. You may submit comments after tonight's public hearing, but they must be postmarked or emailed by April 30, 2021 to become part of the public hearing record. Written comments can be mailed or emailed to the project manager, Tori White, whose contact information is shown on the slide and in your handout. You may also visit the project website listed on the screen to further view documents and submit comments. The exact transcript of this public hearing's oral proceedings, together with all written material received as part of the hearing's recording and all studies, displays, information material provided at the hearing will be made part of the project decision-making process and will be available for public review upon request. Thank you for attending this public hearing and for providing your input on this project. I hereby officially close the public hearing at 6:37. Thank you for your participation, and have a safe evening.